A good evening, everyone, and I'm calling to order this meeting of the Sumamish City Council at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, November 5th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Train.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosina O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by the fabulous Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb. Thank you very much. And Councilmember O'Farrell, if you could help us with the land acknowledgement.
Happy to. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we will move now to public comment. So the public is welcome to attend city meetings in person or to attend via Zoom. And we will start with general public comment. Now, there are different pieces of paper out there for different hearings, so make sure that you've signed up for the right hearing. And we will start with Gillian Wallace.
Greetings, Gillian Wallace of Inglewood, and tonight I have some special guests with me. May I introduce our local Girl Scout troop. We have been talking about all of this election stuff and working on our democracy badge by learning on our community leaders, or learning about our community leaders, and while discussing our Inglewood community. I had a question asked by one of these lovely ladies. "But I go to school in Bellevue," she said, "so I'm not one part of the Inglewood community, am I?" "Oh, but you are," I responded. "There are a bunch of my neighbors who are teachers in Bellevue. They live here, just like you do, and they commute to Bellevue for school, just like you do. So we're still the same community, and we all go to the same stores, and when we see our favorite teachers in the world wild, it's like finding a unicorn. Whoa, it's Taylor Swift, or the mayor, or our music teacher at the store, but I left them alone because they need to eat and, you know, I need to let them do regular people things, right? So when we see our personal celebrities, like our teachers at the local sushi restaurant, our children learn to see our teachers as real people, that they don't sleep at school, and that we do actually let our educators out to feed at night. Although we do live in Inglewood District of Sumamish, our city representatives, who are also grocery shopping, work with our city's neighbors like Bellevue and Issaquah to respect us and represent us to the next big district, our King County. So then we use our voices and our kind words to represent us as a state, a state of Washington founded in 1889, and Inglewood was here for that. Because our Inglewood has been nurtured and grown, much like our indigenous cedar trees, we've grown from just our tiny little lakeside neighborhood into the city of Sumamish as it is today. And we are all small communities that work together with our public comments, presently defined as using our voice, our words, and our demonstration. Sometimes we need to use our public comment to be loud and heard. Sometimes we use it to protect and defend ourselves, our friends, our neighbors, our wildlife, our projects. Sometimes we use our public comment to represent those who don't have access or the ability to have their own public comment. Sometimes we use it to influence others to join our community, and other times it's just to remind people to vote. But we do need to use our public comment, so we need to be inclusive and kind, be respectful of others' opinions and feelings, because they are humans who also probably need to eat. Thank you for the safe and accessible space for me to make this public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Dawn Lovely.
Hello, Dawn Lovely. I've been a resident of Sumamish for 17 years. I live in Tamarack, which is right off of Inglewood Hill, and I wanted to make you aware of a situation and ask for your help. So the bottom part of Tamarack is on Sixth Street, and that connects up to 210th Street. And if you're familiar with this area, there were four new homes that were built at the end of Sixth Street, and during that time, it was blocked by the contractor from residents in Tamarack from being able to drive through there. So for most of the 17 years that I've lived here, me and all my neighbors, we've used that road, the 210th connection to Sixth Street, to go up to the Inglewood traffic circle because it's the quickest direct connection to go to either Mead or Inglewood Safeway or Eastlake High School. So like I said, it was closed during construction, so at the end of the construction, which as you remember, if you remember that messy area, it was many years, probably four or five years. So at the end of the construction, we were super excited that the road was going to open back up. At this time, the residents of 210th put up a fence to block anybody from going through there. The contractor took out his cement blockade, but the residents of 210th put up a fence. And then the new residents on Sixth Street and those four houses put up bollards. So they have essentially split the Tamarack division, and nobody from Tamarack can drive through there anymore. This has gotten worse. My son goes through there on his bike. He has been threatened by a resident on the last house on Sixth Street, and he was also threatened by a resident on 210th Street. So this is really getting out of hand. So first of all, the fence and the bollards are illegal. They have split Tamarack. It's wrong. And now they're threatening my son for coming through there on his bike. This is unacceptable, and I'm really worried about how this is going to escalate further, plus the fact that I don't get to drive through there anymore. I mean, we all in Tamarack used that road. And this is not a private matter. I'm asking for the help from the city of Sumamish because the city of Sumamish owns the land that is adjacent to Sixth Street and 10th Street. So I'm asking for your help to get involved. I do not feel this is a private matter, and it's really getting out of hand. So please get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Cooper.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Cooper. While I have many roles, today I'm here as a Sumamish resident and community volunteer. Last fall, I was unexpectedly laid off. It could have unraveled me, and honestly, it did for a while, but it also revealed something deeper, a desire to help transform lives. As a longtime fan of TED Talks, I applied for a TEDx license, not to speak, but to create a stage for many other women. TEDx Sumamish Women was born. After months of self-doubt, I went to Facebook, not my jam, but I needed to find my community in a public place. Interesting how even then it was hard to ask for help, so I simply posted that I was seeking volunteers. The support overwhelmed me. Women from across Sumamish raised their hands. So what is TEDx? It's the local independently organized version of TED Talks curated by community members like me. TED grants the license, but no funding. TEDx Sumamish Women will take place Saturday, November 15th. We do have a few tickets left at tedxsumamishwomen.com, and all fees go to cover our operational costs, so AV equipment, venue, and other associated items. Our speakers include artists, executives, moms, a widow, coaches, entrepreneurs, five of whom live right here in Sumamish. Many are sharing their stories publicly for the first time. This year's full theme is Worthy: Our Power Within, Tools, Truths, and Transformation. Simply stated, it is worthy, period. A declaration, not a question. Worth isn't something we earn, it's something we remember. Neuroscience shows that people who operate from unworthiness often seek external validation, triggering stress responses that limit creativity and connection. In contrast, those who feel inherently worthy show greater resilience, collaboration, and emotional regulation. Their brains are wired for trust and contribution. And let me be clear, worthiness is not an entitlement. It's not arrogance or superiority. It's quiet confidence, the ability to take up space, set boundaries, and speak with clarity. It's what allows someone like me to show up and give remarks at a city council meeting. This isn't just a singular event on November 15th, it's a movement. Women who once passed each other in the periphery in our own community now stop and connect. We've built a circle of support that didn't exist before. In a city of 65,000 where women make up more than half the population, this matters. Moms and women are the connectors, solopreneurs, volunteers, breadwinners. Communities thrive when women are supported, when they lead, and when their voices are amplified. My ask for everyone here, tell your friends, buy a ticket, make a donation, or send us your supportive sentiments. Connect with us at tedxsumamishwomen.com. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Rains.
Heather Murphy Rains, 20 years Sumamish resident. The people have spoken, and they spoke for change in this election. This election wasn't about partisanship, it was about a referendum on 4K, and our community made it clear we wanted a different direction. We want moderation and compromise, we want unity and all residents represented. We've watched this year as decisions were made for developers, not for residents. We've seen traffic gridlock worsen over the years, trees disappear, and the character of our neighbors slowly erode. We're deeply concerned for our trees, our bees, our kokanee, and our environment under the weight of high-density growth, growth that threatens to outpace our roads, schools, and infrastructure. Our emergency egress routes are already strained. It's a wildfire, flood, or major event forced evacuation tomorrow. We all know what would happen, and it would be gridlock. Safety delayed is safety denied. And yet, the response we kept hearing was build more high-density. Meanwhile, 4K would have added thousands more units with no real plan, safety, or relief, and the cost, those always fall hardest on the people least able to bear them. Fixed-income seniors and low-income renters are being taxed out of their homes here, watching the community they built become unaffordable. Families are spent out, have spent hours on dreaded gridlock, I spent it last night, taking away from their children their work and their lives. We said no to that. We said yes to balance, yes to protecting our trees, our lakes, and our safety, yes to planning wisely at a human scale for people, not profit. So I'm asking the incumbents in this council to finish this year with integrity. The people delivered a clear message, please listen. Represent us, not outside interests, not developer partners as partners, not political agendas. Represent the families stuck in traffic, the seniors fearing another tax increase, the teachers managing 35 kids to a classroom, and the first responders and families who know how dangerous congestion can be. This election was about reclaiming our future, about stewardship, safety, and sustainability. The people have spoken on this election. It's time to listen. Please stick to the plan, and please respect the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy McComber.
Amy McComber. I'm, I live in Tamarack and on 210th Place. That's my son in the back, who's been shaking his car around and giving you some sounds. I thought I was going to have a caretaker here, but unfortunately, didn't work out. So we've had a really big day, so I'm hoping he does great. He lives on that street, and right now, he's having a super great day, but he suffers with seizure disorder as well as severe autism. You may have seen him on the streets, you know, when cars are driving by and things. These people that put up this blockade that was spoken of by Dawn Lovely, I have no idea their reasoning. All I know is that there are some lawyers involved. When I've been talking with some other people, I have not approached them personally, but I can't think of any reason why they did it in the first place. It's not their land. I don't know why they were chastised when somebody tried to remove that. I don't know why it's allowed to put an obstruction in an easement and a right-of-way, but it's just not allowed to remove it. It doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm telling you with, I mean, we've been dealing with this construction now for many months, which I'm super grateful for because I know that it needs to be done, and we've all been very patient and loving about it, and I appreciate the efforts made because it needs to be done, and we need to be patient. But he doesn't understand that. He doesn't understand a word we're saying. Gregory. Hi. Come over here and sit down, buddy. But when he needs to go, when he needs to get home, it's emergent. E-mergent. I cannot stress that. Ask the police, they know him. Ask the aid cars, they know who he is. But he's a part of this community, and he deserves to be able to have a back door, to be able to get home when he needs to get home in a safe location. So I'm begging you to please don't allow some big, high-powered lawyer just to push their way around and do something that's totally unfair to our community. I'm just going to say one more thing before I finish up. There was somebody that got hit really hard with the bomb cyclone on the other side of that fence from these people, and they could not get the big trucks in there without moving that fence, and they begged them, could you please move your stuff so that we can clean up our yard? They had trees that had fallen on their house and next door to their house, and they wouldn't do it. And they had to beg them and plead them. They finally moved them just so they could get the machinery in there to help them, and then they moved them right back. It does block a fire hydrant. I mean, I just cannot figure out the sanity behind this, and I can't figure out why the city doesn't care and the council doesn't care. I mean, maybe you care, but you got to take action if you do, and I got to speak for him.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to speak? If not, we will move to online comment.
Those who have pre-registered to provide an online comment, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment at this time. Hey, Mary, when you're ready.
Good evening, council, and everybody in the room, and people listening or watching online later. My name is Mary Victor. I've lived in Sumamish 25 years. I also live in Tamarack. It's a neighborhood that's adjacent to 1889 Inglewood plat, which the city knows a lot about, and actually did a bunch of apologizing about their public and private, public roads which aren't private roads, and being able to take extra time and extra looking at paperwork to be able to write things for them, and you're still working with that community. Tamarack lies directly south of Inglewood. We're not from 1889, but we are from 1964. We're as part of an assessor's plat of Tamarack because there really wasn't a developer, and when the assessor wants to get taxes, they go ahead and put the plat down. There was also not comprehensive subdivision regulations until 1969 in the state of Washington. So we just have a survey, and it works really well. And as it was planned out, the roads are all connected, and the roads, everybody that owns a lot owns halfway into the roadway that's adjacent. So for my house, I have three roads I'm adjacent to, I actually own halfway into three of them, which is about the same length of road that you've heard other people talk about tonight, including Dawn Lovely and Amy McComber just now. The problem is, is all of our routes are on Lewis Thompson Road, which is currently under construction. We know about that project and support it, and we're hoping that it will finish up either this fall or in the spring. But the north access to Tamarack should not be blocked. There were four houses, it took a long time to build because it's landslide hazard area, there wasn't any stormwater. And when those got completed, we were expecting that the road would be opened again because it's normal that a road closed sign and some temporary blockages would be in the road. But that hasn't happened. In fact, I've been photographing, and I provided all this to the city. I brought it up October last year when they were doing the golden shovel for starting Lewis Thompson Road, and then I sent some more information and clarification, and then May, June, and July, I also sent information and started contacting council members, but to no avail. And the fence that people are talking about, which blocks the hydrant and also blocks the road, I was actually told through one of the city council members that talked with somebody at the city, that the city has put that up. But I do know that it used to be movable, it was something that, like, my husband and I could pick up and move out of the way, and in the last year, it's been concreted into the ground. And where it is concreted in the ground, it is less than 15 feet from a fire hydrant. There are blockages there, stuff's been put there, and it's concreted in the ground, you can't move it, and there's multiple locks on the gate, so you'd have to open them even if you're in emergency services. And then the four yellow bollards by the last, the fourth of the new houses went up, I reported that to the city, and nothing's been done to address that either. But the land that is adjacent to that is owned by the city, and the city owns halfway into the roadway, which includes both those blockages. So I haven't heard anything back. I'm still waiting. It's been almost a year now. Thanks.
Thank you.
That was the only online registered commenter.
Thank you. We will move now to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will go to proclamations and presentations. The first proclamation will be Native American Heritage Month with Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Sumamish recognizes the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, as a time to honor the diverse cultures, histories, and contributions of Native American communities across our nation. And the city acknowledges that it is on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe, which is an important partner with the city of Sumamish. And recognizing Native American Heritage Month allows us an opportunity to reflect on the tremendous contributions of Native Americans in our country and our region, covering every corner of human achievements. And the city is committed to more than reflection and is pleased to be an active partner with the Snoqualmie Tribe on key initiatives, such as working together to restore our precious kokanee salmon. And everyone is encouraged to immerse themselves in the varied and diverse Native American heritage, art, history, cultures, and business ventures. We encourage all residents to read and share Native American literature, explore indigenous cuisine, and participate in cultural events and activities that celebrate Native American heritage. And we acknowledge the complexities surrounding Thanksgiving, recognizing it as a national day of mourning and protest for many Native peoples, commemorating the arrival of settlers and the centuries of oppression that followed. And this year's likely, this year's theme, honoring Indigenous resilience and leadership in a changing world, reflects the ongoing strength and contributions of Native American communities while also addressing contemporary challenges and advocating for their sovereignty, particularly for Indigenous youth and future generations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the Sumamish City Council, recognizes the month of November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month. And we invite all residents to reflect on the contributions of Native Americans, engage with their communities, and commit to building a future that honors and uplifts the voices and rights of Indigenous people. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a plug for this particular thing, this particular proclamation, there's a terrific series, it's called Indian Country 101. It's a series of webinars that will take you through the history of the treaty process and of several tribes throughout the region, in particular proximate to the Pacific Northwest. And so if you want to truly honor Indigenous people, this would be the best way to do it, is to actually learn about them from themselves and how they reference themselves. So I would like to hear now the next proclamation from councilmembers. Clark.
All right. National Veterans Day. Whereas Veterans Day was originally recognized by President Woodrow Wilson in 1919 as Armistice Day, Armistice Day, wow, that's a tough one, to recognize the heroism of those who died in the country's military service and with gratitude for the victory that secured peace for our nation. And Veterans Day now honors all who have served in the United States Armed Forces, recognizing their dedication, bravery, and the continued impact of their service on the freedoms we enjoy today. And veterans face unique challenges as they transition from military life to civilian life, and it is our duty to support them in the pursuit of health care, employment, education, and overall well-being. And the 2025 theme, Service to Our Nation, emphasizes that service to the nation is a unified, ongoing commitment that transcends individual uniforms, battlefields, or generations. And we recognize the contributions of military veterans in the Sumamish community and nationwide, and we celebrate their achievements and deeply appreciate their service to our country. And now, therefore, Mayor Karen Howe, Mayor of the city of Sumamish, does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as National Veterans Day, and encourages all residents to recognize the legacy of loyalty and service exemplified by our veterans, participate in community events, and show their appreciation for the invaluable contributions our veterans have made to our nation.
Thank you, councilmember. And I will add a side note to this as well. I struggled and found, I actually was going to give this to Romero Valderrama, but he's in Peru, going to Colombia. He's never here. And so Cherie Valderrama recommended the Sheds, because the Sheds have a website that honors and references as many veterans as she can find in Sumamish. And so if you're not familiar with her work, it would be great to make sure that her website is complete and has a reference material for the different veterans that are here in Sumamish. But we'll be giving this proclamation to the Sheds at a later date. So, in reference to their service, and Harry Shedd is a veteran. So we will now move to public hearings. The first hearing will be on the 2025-2026 mid-biennium budget hearing.
I'll wait for the presentation to get...
We're going to have the presentation first.
Yes.
I am not opening it yet.
Yes, as soon as it's up on the screen, we'll go ahead and start. For the record, Vicky Carlson, Finance Director. Okay, so let's see if this works. Oh, it does. Perfect. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the mid-biennium amendments and adjustments to the 2025-2026 budget. Just as a reminder before we walk through these, an amendment is a net change to the total budget in a fund, and often are legally required. An example of that is adding a utility tax. An adjustment, there is no net change to the total budget, it's not legally required, but we do do it for transparency purposes. And you'll see several examples in here of adjustments, and we are utilizing existing budget where plans have changed, or some things have come in less than originally budgeted for, to fund these, so the net effect is zero on the budget. So the amendments will be included in the ordinance that you'll have before you to approve later on. Adjustments are for notation only. With one exception, all of these you saw during the presentation of the work plan the last month. We're going to focus on the general fund first, so on this page are all of the amendments for the general fund. The first one is adjusting the beginning fund balance, it's a decrease of $96,000, truing up what we budgeted for the beginning fund balance to actuals. Most of these are revenue adjustments, including adding the utility tax, adjusting the fire permit revenue from the presentation that happened last month, removal of the remaining revenue from the CWU lease that was canceled. We did receive a grant from the bomb cyclone, part of it goes to the general fund, part of it goes to surface water operations. The last two on the slide affect both revenues and expenditures. The second to bottom one, the insurance reimbursement, it's $110,000 in expenditures, $105,000 in revenue, so just a net increase in expenditures of $5,000. And then the affordable housing, the $1.1 million is both revenue and expenditure, so the net is zero. On page 31 of the packet... On page 31 of the packet, there is a chart showing the general fund, and it shows all of these impacts. You can see how this impacts the budget for the general fund. Total increases in revenue is just shy of $11.681,000. And total increases in expenditures is the $1.21 million. Again, I'll accept $5,000 if that expenditure adjustment is revenue-backed. And then I also want to remind you that when the budget was adopted last year, we did have a budgeted drawdown of fund balance of about $14.3 million. With these adjustments, the budgeted drawdown will be about $3.8 million. So a definite reduction in how much we're drawing down fund balance, but it is still a negative fund balance at the end of the biennium. On this list is all of the adjustments. Again, we went through these with a work plan, with the exception of the last, the second to last one, which is the Fourth of July event. We wanted to call attention to this because the fireworks themselves for the Fourth of July event have had significant cost increases, and so we just wanted to call attention to that. We will be absorbing the cost into the budget through other savings, but through the biennium, it is a $60,000 increase just for the fireworks alone. Any questions on that before we move into other funds? So these next couple of slides are amendments to the other funds. I basically have them listed in order of the fund. Every fund, we're adjusting the beginning fund balance either upwards or down. The general fund, CIP, in the middle of the screen, we do have one budget amendment where the MOC tank replacement was supposed to be completed last year. It's being completed this year, and so we are increasing the expenditure budget by $150,000. It would have been spent last year. It's gonna be spent this year. And then in the parks, CIP fund, reared house renovations, we did add budget for that for $200,000 to complete that project. Transportation fund, again, the only amendment, so I'm getting my words mixed up, the only amendment is adjusting the beginning fund balance. Surface water, you'll see the Bomb Cyclone revenue coming in that's being reimbursed by the state. The surface water capital fund, I do want to call attention to the very last line there. If you look in the packet, the grant revenue, I missed adding to the PowerPoint slide, but it is an amendment, so I wanted to call attention to that. So we are increasing the expenditure budget by $1.7 million, but we're increasing the revenue budget due to grants by over $3 million. So that's good news. Wanted to call attention to that one. And then the other amendments for other funds is that our internal service funds, the only amendments there are adjusting the beginning fund balance to true those up. And again, on page, let me get my slides caught up. Pages 34 through 40 of the packet, you'll see budget financial statement showing the impact of all of these adjustments, fund by fund. And then these last slide, we do have some adjustments. There's two funds affected. Again, all of these were reviewed when we did the work plan update last month. There's a few in the transportation CIP fund, and then a few in the surface water capital fund. They're all listed on this slide. Again, we're not amending the budget, just showing adjustments through savings from other projects and cost increases on others. And that is the end of my presentation. We do ask that this public hearing, once it's open, be held over into the next meeting. Tonight, we're planning to focus more on the operating side through this public hearing, which is the budget amendments, and then you'll have another public hearing on property taxes. The middle public hearing, we're gonna be focusing on capital next week.
Counsel, do you have any clarifying questions before I open the hearing? If not, I'll just open the public hearing now. So this is open, and we will conclude our business the following week on the next Wednesday. Are there any, is there anyone signed up for public comment for this particular item? If not, Counsel, do you have questions about what you've seen?
Are we addressing this next week or in two weeks? I thought we were bringing this back in two weeks.
It's my understanding, still being new to the city for this particular process, last year was my first year, open the public hearing tonight, and then it will stay open until it's adopted, the last meeting in November.
Yeah, so it'll be two weeks from tonight. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
Two more shots at public comment and council questions.
Thank you very much. No, you're fine. Did anyone else have anything? Because I have something if no one has anything. Okay, great. I am asking for an amendment that I'd like to see some coalescence of the council on something on this. In particular, I'd like to ask for $200,000 to go to support residents who are missing their SNAP benefits and who are immigrants and facing extreme challenges right now. Now, the way that this money would get portioned out is that it would go into the Human Services Fund, because we already have contracts with organizations that have already been thoroughly vetted. That would be appropriate to be able to help and support, say, for example, not suggesting this is the one, but the Issaquah Food Bank would be a case in point, potentially the Circle would be another one. So what I'm looking for from counsel is there a general agreement that that would be okay to set aside those funds to help our neighbors and our residents?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm fully, I know. That's okay. I'll just tap on your shoulder. The, I love the idea of that because we don't know when people will get their benefits restored, but I'm wondering, have we spoken with the Human Services Commission at all in terms of just how much they think that the organizations will need to cover that? Again, I'm fully supportive of adding funds, but I want to know that that's a...
They're gonna need more than that. So this is a drop in the bucket. It's a start. It's also something that we can manage at this time without having to make any significant adjustments to the budget. The other point I'll bring up is that every city is looking at doing something very similar in terms of immigrant support and food bank support. So what we all feel is poor. We all feel like we are supplying inadequate funds for a massive problem. But doing nothing is also completely not okay. So if that is the case and we feel good about this, then I would like to say that you have direction now to set aside the 200K.
Okay. Yep. And in staff's recommendation, we would just take this out of existing fund balance and adjust, increase the expenditure line for that. So if that's amenable, when we bring this back for final adoption, we will make sure this is included in that.
Thank you. I think that'd be great. I appreciate your help. We'll move now to the next item, which is the Capital Improvement Plan Public Hearing.
Yes. And so we do not have a presentation tonight. We were unable to get the document published until Monday this week. It is a very lengthy document, and we want to give counsel and our community plenty of time to review the document. And so what we'd like to do tonight is open the public hearing, ask for any public comment, but we'll do a formal presentation on it next week after people have had a chance to do a more thorough review.
So since there's no, there's actually no presentation, what I will do is I will open the pub, and I'm assuming there's no questions. Then I will open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? I'm gonna go with no. Okay. We're not even, and no is online too, right? So.
We have a pre-registered public commenter online.
All right.
Okay, one moment. And if you can please clarify which hearing you're commenting on, or both.
This would be the public hearing for the operations part of the mid-bi adjustment. My name's Mary Victor, and I just wanted to say that I've done a lot of stormwater stuff since 2015. I've joined the Kokany Work Group, and I'm for salmon and preserving them, doing the Fish Passage barriers, I understand, requirements for that, and then also just the need for the city to deal with stormwater and reduce flooding. The George Davis Creek project runs actually right through the Tamrac Track A, and there's a lot of sediment and things that can be built up, and there's also septic systems that are getting old in Inglewood, so I don't know if those are being looked at for projects. But what I would like to see is, looks to me, from what I've seen compared to Zaccoose and Ebright Creek and Pine Lake Creek, Fish Passage projects, that the George Davis project will be the biggest one and the most expensive, I think, of any stormwater project I've seen. I've seen his numbers as big as 14 million. So at some point, it'd be really nice if there was a slide showing what the components are of the George Davis Creek. Like, I know that there was some land purchased and that there's a building that I believe will be demolished, and there's the Fish Passage, and then there's the flooding that you're dealing with. And I think if some visibility could be given to that so people understand what the project is. Also, I think you're intending to do it maybe in the next year, so people need to know that that road would be closed, and he's like Sammamish Parkway again, and we're just finishing up the Lewis Thompson Road. So I think just some attention to having good information for people to see so they can understand the impact and the size of the project, and then also just information about when and what type of impacts that there might be would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
That's all online. I just want to confirm, Mary, was that the only public comment you wanted to provide thus far?
Yes, that's fine. And I'm still only just seeing mountains on my screen.
Okay, that's all for public comment.
Okay, thank you. And, I'm sorry, Vicky, how long is this public hearing open for?
We would ask that it be open through November, the third meeting in November, until it's adopted.
All right, the third meeting in November, the hearing will stay open. Thank you. And if there's no other comments about this, then we will move on to the next hearing, which is on the 2026 property tax levy. And there is a presentation for this.
Yes. Christine Nenien, the Deputy Finance Director, and it's a short presentation and probably a refresher for most of you, just reminders about the property tax levy. So the dollar mine increase in property taxes is capped 1% per year by the state, and that's 1% on the total city levy. It's not per house or per property. The 1% increase to the city for 2026 is $286,979, and that is calculated by the King County Assessor's Office. Just a reminder that as the assessed valuation of the property fluctuates, the property tax rate fluctuates in the opposite direction. So an increase in the AV causes a decrease in the property tax rate, which is what is gonna happen in 2026, as the total assessed value in Sammamish increased 10.69%, or $32.11 from $32.11 billion to $35.54 billion. About 13% of the total property tax levy collected by King County when they levy taxes goes to the city to fund services. 62% goes towards schools, and the remaining 25% goes to King County and various small taxing districts, which we'll see on the next slide. Next slide. I'm trying. There we go. Okay. So this is the 2025 property tax distribution, which is the most recent year we have available. And you can see that Sammamish is there at 12.9% of the total property tax that is levied. So the next slide is an illustration in dollars using the median home value as calculated by King County, again, for 2025, of $1.426 million. The total levy was $8.63 per thousand, and that was in the Issaquah School District. It's a little more, there's probably 10 or 12 levy rates in Sammamish, depending if you're in a hospital district, what school district you're in. So we used Issaquah. So the total taxes on this mythical median value home were $12,301 for 2025. Of that amount, the city received $1,581. So next slide. And this is an extrapolation to 2026. I took the 2025 median home value and increased it by 10.69%, which was the city AV increase. And the levy rate for 2025 was $1.11, and the tax on this home was, property was $1,581. The 2026 levy rate is estimated by the Assessor's Office will be $1.01. And with the 1% increase, this median valued home would pay $1,597 to the city in 2026. It's an increase of about $15.15 for the year. And that's it. So our next steps are to open the public hearing this evening and consider approving the property tax ordinance on November 18. And we must submit our property tax ordinance to King County by December 1, 2025. Are there any questions?
Are there any clarifying questions from counsel? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments?
Not in the room. Let's see if, those who have pre-registered online, please raise your hand if you'd like to provide a comment. No online comment.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for counsel to ask any other questions around this. If there are no questions, we will hold the public hearing open until November 18. Thank you. Thank you. We will now go to unfinished business, which is financial policies. Again, with Vicky Carlson.
Yes, thank you. So I don't have a presentation tonight. We walked through the financial policies at our last meeting in October. Just wanted to remind you that the broad purpose of these financial policies is to enable us to achieve and maintain a long-term, stable, and positive financial position. We want to provide an adequate financial base to sustain our levels of service, deliver cost-effective and efficient services to our community, provide and maintain public facilities and capital equipment, provide financial stability to navigate short-term economic downturns, and we want to adhere to the highest standards of financial management. The plan is, is once these are adopted, they would be reviewed on a regular basis, and my proposal is that they're reviewed as part of the budget process, so they'd be adopted this year. And since next year is a budget process, we would take the opportunity to get in that regular cadence of reviewing them and updating them if needed. And the plan tonight is answer any questions if you have additional questions, and then ask for adoption at the last meeting in November.
Councilmember Gupta.
There we go. So with proposed adoption this year and then the proposed update with the regular budget process next year, would the cadence then be every two years or with every year?
We would recommend every two years, just as part of the budget process, but obviously if something significantly changes, it could be reviewed. There's nothing set that says we can't review it more frequently, but I think a biennial review is appropriate.
Great. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I believe we're done right now with this particular set of business.
Thank you.
So continuing new business, we have approving the 2025 Hearing Examiner Rules of Procedure. David Pyle.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Great. Apologies for the delay. So the next item on the agenda this evening, as the mayor highlighted, is review and adoption of updated 2025 City Hearing Examiner Rules of Procedure. The city contracts for hearing examiner services. The hearing examiner acts as an independent reviewer of proposed decisions and appeals. I like to think of the hearing examiner often as an auditor who reviews city staff work and works to settle or resolve appeals when there is... work, and works to settle or resolve appeals when there is disagreement around terms of permits, or information that's presented as fact in permit documents. The procedures for appeals to Hearing Examiner are set by SMC 2109020. The Hearing Examiner holds a contract with the city council. The city council reviews Hearing Examiner proposals, and ultimately decides and selects on a Hearing Examiner periodically. The cities, the current city Hearing Examiner has served the city since 2002, and I believe that the current city contract is set to expire in 2026. We currently use Hearing Examiner John Galt. He has provided services to the city on a whole wide range of cases, cases like the Eastlake-Samamish Trail, which filled this room, and I believe the hearing was three days long, other projects like Lancaster-Big Rock Subdivision, which resulted in multiple remands, and ultimately, finally, an approval. Additionally, projects like the Town Center Unified Zone Development Permit Appeal, which I believe took several days as well. The city's Hearing Examiner Rules of Procedure are really the guidelines by which the examiner operates a hearing proceeding. They are updated periodically to reflect changes in technology, and in trends, and things that the Hearing Examiner needs to adjust the rules to reflect, such as email transmittals, electronic filings, Zoom hearings. In this case, the changes that are made really are around e-filings and Zoom hearings. There are also some minor adjustments to the number of days in advance of the hearing that something needs to be filed, really just to account for the time that it takes. There's less time needed now due to electronic transmittals. In the past, when things had to be sent by mail or hand-delivered, it did take longer. When reproduction was required by way of paper, it did take longer as well. Now that things are electronic, they move a little faster. So let's see, going back, one other item that I wanted to cover was that the Hearing Examiner ultimately adopts the rules of procedure, transmits them to the city for review, but at the point of adoption, the rules do become effective until they are adopted or otherwise amended by the city council. The last time this took place was in 2017, and I believe the resolution number is referenced in the agenda bill. We do not have any recommendations to the edits set forth by the Hearing Examiner, we don't have an opinion on it either way. We do believe that e-filing is very helpful, that holding hearings by way of Zoom provides additional opportunity for access by members of the public who might not be able to attend in person, and that ultimately, it results in a better opportunity for all with regard to the hearing. With that, I'll pass it back over to the mayor, there is a recommended motion here for consideration, and happy to answer any questions.
If not, if there is there a motion? Someone? Okay. Oh, there we go. I move to approve the 2025 Updated Hearing Examiner Rules of Procedure, as presented in the packet.
Second?
Do you want to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
We will now move to council reports. I asked the city manager to include a letter into this packet, which has to do with, it's from the Association of Washington Cities, and it has to do with working with the Ruckelhaus School of Management to try to do a better job of creating something that may cost our residents and taxpayers slightly less than the way it's being proposed today. Forgive me for not, I don't have the letter in front of me, so. Okay, but someone else does, thank you. Basically, is to, is to try to convey the serious concerns about the state's current path towards nutrient regulation for municipal wastewater treatment plants. The regulatory approach will require wastewater plant upgrades that are projected to cost over $25 billion. So before accounting for inevitable cost overruns, this will result in millions of Washingtonians seeing the utility bills increase. So I am looking for ways to provide relief and support to residents, and to keep their, this particular utility bill more realistic. And so the recommendation basically is to work with a public educational institution to see what they can do to offer different solutions that might not cost as much. So if, with approval, we'll sign on to this letter. I think I just need head nods, if that's okay. So if we're good with that, then we will sign on to the letter, and it could be forwarded. Thank you, sorry, there was a tight deadline on the letter. Oh, I did see that said, Councilmember Gupta, did you have a comment?
No, sorry, mayor, I have a report to follow.
Ah, okay. So we are to that famous part of the evening, where we go to council member reports and the city manager report. We'll start with the council member reports, then we'll go to city manager.
Just a reminder that this Saturday, November 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Redmond Senior and Community Center, in partnership with the KCLS Foundation, we're hosting the Rainbow Connections event. We had one last year up in Issaquah Highlands, it was really joyous, really positive, really excited to be a part of it again this year. I believe council voted to bring the city on as an official sponsor in September, so I would invite members of the community to attend, and invite council members as well. I was also informed today that we are specifically looking for volunteers to help clean up, so if you have time, please come and join us. Thank you.
As I look down the line of council members, are there other reports?
Yeah, we have a, I have a GMPB, which is the Growth Management Planning Board, meeting tomorrow, where we will talk, have a presentation on regional centers designations around the region, and 2025 Housing Monitor Update, the Year of Policy Change, which I think will be very interesting, and a Regional Economic Strategy Update. So that's on the calendar for tomorrow. I don't believe we will be taking any action, but I will share back the presentations once we have them.
Thank you. Councilmember Trina, did you have something? I couldn't tell.
Thank you, Mayor Howe. Yeah, just one thing, I got a call today, will be, I will be doing optional listening sessions on Wednesday and Friday from 12:00 to 1:00 for the ILA Management Group, for the Kokanee Work Group. We have a small, we have, well, it's a large challenge with Hatchery, and so we are actually moving a part of our operations to a new site. And so there's going to be a change in our budget and cost, but we believe we can absorb it into the budget that we approved. So, but that's what the two meetings are going to be about, talking with the other electeds as to, if we, if we make the changes that we need to, there would be an additional cost, but we can absorb it. If they decide we're not going to make the changes, then we have to look for another option.
Thank you. How about down this line? I'll mention that we are in the process of actually vetting through a performance review for the fire chief. So councilmembers Stewart and I have worked through that. We've also been working on the new fire chief's contract, which has been arduous, trying to figure out how to make this work. We also consider a career in the fire service, potentially. At any rate, you know, trying to keep our costs reasonable, but also be fair to our new chief, because it's a big job. So those are the big things that I'm working on right now. And if nothing else, then Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, want to thank everyone for coming out last Thursday night to the trunk retreat event. They really hit the sweet spot for the weather, it was beautiful out there, and we had somewhere in the range of around 1,000 families come out and participate, all the way until it got so dark, it was hard to see. So really appreciate the community coming out and joining us for that, it was great to see all the kids in all their costumes, and everyone just having a good time. It was definitely a very positive event to be out there for. Couple of quick notes coming up, Veterans Day, we observe Veterans Day on Tuesday, so next Tuesday, City Hall will be closed, hence the council meeting is again moved to Wednesday, just as a reminder. And as we are getting near the end of the year, I'm looking for a head nod from council around, generally, we cancel the last meeting in December, and so I'm looking for a head nod from council that we want to continue that tradition, and it would be the December 16th meeting we would cancel, and we would make the 2nd and the 9th both business meetings. All right, with that, we will post that on the website and let folks know in plenty of advanced time. And with that, Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. If there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.